At this time, I would just like to say welcome to the Haywood County Schools Board of Education Work Session. For those that are watching online, welcome. We've got a lot of stuff to cover tonight. And Dr. Nolte, I'll just turn it over to you, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll read the agenda for the benefit of those who might be listening rather than watching, or who may not have an agenda. We will begin with Ms. Barker giving us an update on the family intent information that's being collected regarding in-person blended instruction. And I will follow that with lots of information about pros and cons related to in-person instruction. As you all know, we try to be as transparent as we can on lots of issues, so we just want everybody to see as big a picture as we can see at this point in time. Dr. Putnam will follow up with information on moves out of the current central office and in other locations. Then I'll do a brief research approval update for you. You know, I'm required to report those to you, and I usually do that in a work session. Mr. Hines is going to remind us about employee leave options that we have as it relates to COVID-19. Dr. Putnam, under general announcements, has an announcement on turf for your information. I know he's handed you some materials, but also for public information. And then we'll talk about anything else that you all feel like we need to talk about, and then I think end with close session. And Mr. Francis, on our side, I don't think we anticipate any action, but just a legal update and maybe a little personnel.
That was my understanding as well, that we would not take any action after the close session.
So at this time, I'll hand the mic to Jill Barker, and she can...
Chairman Francis, and members of the board, and listeners, good evening. And at this time, I want to give you an update on the return-to-learn survey that we sent out to parents. Dr. Nolte asked them that they, that principals and schools send that out no later than Tuesday, September 8th, and the survey results are actually due tomorrow. But we have some pretty good numbers in. We wanted to share those with you tonight, so you could be thinking about that and hear what our parents and our students are saying about return-to-learn. First of all, I gave you a copy of the survey. I know several of you are parents and have seen it, but several of you are not. So we asked for just, you know, name, address, which is going to be very important when we start arranging transportation, if that is your wish to do that. But the big question, I think, intent for learning to school, returning to school, there were two choices. They could pick a blended, which means they would get some remote and some instruction, or these were drop-down menus, or they could pick total remote. So that is what the survey looked like, if you had not seen that. I just want to say upfront to our teachers out there, several you already told me that you got phone calls to your house, and our administrators who coordinated that, thank you so much for just really getting out and beating the pavement and getting these numbers as accurate as possible. It'll be crucial to our success, whatever decision is made. And I just want to say, that took a lot of time. But to our families, thank you so much, and everyone involved. So when you look at our survey results, currently in our district, our 10-day count, we had 6,797 students enrolled. And right now, we had, as of right now, we'll have some more tomorrow, we had 6,237 parent surveys completed. So if you, on your sheet that Kim has prepared for you, and thank you, Kim Jackson, you can see 4,000, well, we'll get to that in a minute, but overall blended for the district that chose overall blended was 73.9% of our district responded. And again, that's about 92% of our district families have responded. So 73% of them indicated they want a blended model, which would mean returning to some in-person instruction, while 26.3% indicated that they would prefer to stay completely remote at this time. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. You can see the schools percentages, and again, I am so pleased. Several schools had 100% of parents contacted. And when I called several of the principals today, they're like, "We've called and left messages." They've tried really hard. So I'd say we'll get some more in tomorrow. But if you see them, just tell them, tell our teachers and our administrators and staff, thank you for that. What questions do you have for me, just about the survey? I know Dr. Bill wants to talk about some other return-to-learn issues, but I just want to say right now, I have a child too, and I want everybody to know out there, and y'all to know, that the teachers, it's been hard. But they are not in crisis teaching anymore. Our teachers are teaching our kids right now, and they're taking it very seriously, and it's rough. It's really, really hard. I can speak from personal experience, for kids since March have been, you know, it's looked really different for them, and all of a sudden, school has started back. And our teachers have really risen to that challenge, and I know it's been hard on them. They didn't sign up to sit in front of a computer. People that teach sign up because they love children, and they want to see them every day. And that's what, that's what keeps them in this. And so my heart goes out to them, because it has been really, really hard. But we also have to think about keeping our people safe, too. But I want you to know, I've seen, and Kim and Carol, Kim Shipman and Carol Fox, have been out in these schools, and we have too, and there are really some great things going on. So I'm really, really proud so far. And it's been an adjustment for everyone, and we'll continue to adjust. But any questions for me, just about these survey results? Yes, sir, Mr. Clark?
So I'll just make sure I'm clear. This is just a survey of the opinion. Now, will they be allowed to do either are, or is it going to go, are we going to, like, the survey says most people want blended, are we going to be blended, or they have the choice? That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, that's a great question. So here's the thing. People's situations change. It's not black and white. We could have a family who picked remote, because right now, both parents are at home, and they're unemployed, and it's just easier for them right now. But in a month, they may often, they may need to send their kids back to school. I think, as an administrator, you realize, yes, would we want some kind of commitment? But yeah, but at the same time, we also know family situations change. I don't think we'd want to kick them one week one way and one week the next, you know? But those are things principals work out every day. But yeah, there would be some flexibility. Did I answer your question? I think it's going to be, we want them to, they need to choose, but at the same time, there'll be chances, there'll be times where they may say, "This isn't working out for me. Can I come back?" And of course, we would let them come back.
The option that we're going to, remote learning is one of the options, that kids can remote learn all for the rest of the year.
That is a requirement under state law right now. For this year, they, and I said law, but yes, for this year, they, we have to provide that option. Okay? That is a have to, not a want to. Okay? But irregardless, we would want to probably do that anyway. But this year, we have to. Okay?
When he said the rest of the year, is that the rest of 2020, or is that the rest of this physical school year till?
We have to provide remote, this year, this school year, 2021. Yes.
One more question. Did we only have one person from the HCLC reply, or we only have one person?
They only, they only had one person reply. So at this time, and you know, Brickley Nicholson works with those kids, and so they do a lot of remote anyway. So I'm not sure about her, if they would come back, or if they're just all planning on doing remote. That's a, that's a good question, but that's what the number she had right now. So I know Carol was touching base with everybody, just trying to make sure those were solid. They do have online, you know, options there, too, as well. What other questions?
So I know you've already answered this. When they sign up to go remote, are we going to do it in like, six-week periods of time, and then they can return after six weeks? Or are we just going to take it case by case?
I think, to go back to Mr. Clark's question, I think the principals will try to get a commitment from families. Once the decision is made, what we're going to do, okay, here are the people that said you were going to remote. We need some kind of commitment from you, whether, I don't know what that'll look like, but that doesn't mean they'll hold. In high school, we talked about a semester. You know, that might look like a semester. And it could look like that for middle school, too. And elementary could be a little bit different. But I think, you've got to look at it, too, if things really, really improve, and they have improved in our county, but they continue to improve in the nation. Obviously, people's, people's preference may change based on just that data, or their, it's a very personal decision. So I think we're going to have to allow them to do that. And I think if they're in the building, the principals are going to welcome them coming back as much as they can, if they already have students there. Okay? That help, Dr. Rogers?
Okay. I have a couple pages of bulleted points and comments. Again, our, our job is to make sure you as a board, before we likely take some kind of action on Monday, that you as a board have all the information that you can, the community knows. We send lots of press releases and information out, so we want everyone to have as much information as we can. And I think a lot of this will be very, very positive, and it looks like things will go well. Certainly, we start off with the knowledge that 73% of our families have told us at this point in time, they want in-person instruction. And then the other, you know, the other percentage, a little over a quarter, that it won't remote at this time, will be as flexible as possible. There, I have a lot of information that will probably go really quickly, and then there'll be some other points, and how do we want to stop and pause and talk, because the, the other thing that we want to accomplish during this part of the meeting is to make sure we know everything that could go really, really well, and other things that might not go.
I'm getting texts that you're not going through on your microphone. Test one, two. Okay. Let me do a quick summary of what I said before. Thank you, Dr. Putnam. Former CTE person knows to unplug and plug back up to make things work. So again, just summary, we have a couple pages of notes here. It's, it's our job always to cover all the bases. We anticipate a lot of things could go really, really well. We've moved slowly on purpose, so that we would work out a lot of chinks along the way. But there are some things here that we want you and everyone else to know, that may, that may be outside of our control and may not go well. But I'll just, I'll just start, and then we will certainly want to pause whenever you all want to, and talk about different things. The first thing that I had hoped to do was to give a very glowing update on the governor's press conference today, and announce something special. That, that had no content in it for public schools at all. I was disappointed in that. They talked about everything except public schools, and there was one question about schools at the very end from the media. So the governor's press conference today, or the state press conference today did not include the governor. Okay? But anyway, so that had no impact on the decision that we might be making on Monday. I think it's just really important, and Ms. Barker's already done a little bit of this, I think it's really important just to pause for just a second without taking too much time, and just brag on our people. I know we've done that some already, but our people have flat gotten after it. Okay? When our school facilities were closed in March, a little before we wanted them to close, but they were closed, our teachers and administrators, in a matter of about three days, went from face-to-face traditional instruction to really good supplemental instruction remotely. They have done one heck of a good job, and we're very, very proud of them. Likewise, and you all know this, our support services people, namely, school food service and transportation, teacher assistants, administrators, teachers volunteered, they made sure that people were fed, and we served, or provided and distributed some three-quarters of a million meals, 750,000 meals, from mid-March to the, to the end of the summer. So hats off to our people. They've done a great job. When school resumed in August, our teachers began providing really high-quality remote instruction. It was very different than the supplemental work that we did last spring, and certainly much better than some districts who did almost nothing last year. But very high-quality remote instruction. The vast majority of our students today are engaged, and they're learning. It's not a perfect system by any mean, and there are glitches with remote digital access, but they are doing one heck of a job. The students, the parents, the teachers, and the other people supporting them. I think, I think we just have to say that upfront. As we prepare for in-person learning, our procedures at each school really must be manageable by our teachers and our school staff people. Okay? And to, to put that in context, people know historically that we're really one of the best school systems in the state in traditional face-to-face instruction. We have proven that. And then since last March, we have done primarily remote instruction, and we have gotten really good at that. We are about to ask our teachers, and teacher assistants, and administrators, and other support people at the school, to do something very, very different. A Plan B in-person that a lot of us said early on was not designed to work. We're prepared to make it work as best can happen in North Carolina, but we're, we are embarking on something that really hasn't been done very much, and hasn't been done, I don't think extremely well by anyone yet. So as we work site by site to provide good in-person instruction, when we're able to do that, and that may be on the 21st, or you may decide something else, but when we decide to do that, we'll have to make sure that it is manageable for our teachers. They're really good when they're doing the traditional stuff, and they've gotten really good at remote. And now we're going to ask them to do both, and we'll need to make sure that they're not managing too many things, and that we have people assigned to do one or the other in most instances. Okay? And that will look differently at each school. So I just felt like I had to say that upfront. Our greatest resource is, and always will be, our, our people. We have really good ones, and we have talked with the principals and met with them. We're going to meet with all of them again tomorrow in three groups, elementary, middle, and high school, to make sure that what they put in place is manageable and effective, and that our teachers can focus on their particular assignment, whether it be remote, or whether it be in-person, and that they're not too distracted with too many responsibilities. Now, that's, I think, the good news. I think the bad news is, is that it is not going to be neat and clean. I think we just, I have to say that. I'm not trying to be negative at all. But our community is very accustomed to having a high-quality academic school system, where most of the time, in, in our county, you can walk into a third-grade classroom on the east end of the county, and a third-grade classroom on the west end of the county, and it looks pretty much the same. That, that is not physically possible under Plan B. I think we can have really good instruction, but I think it's going to look differently because of the number of students who are there in person, the number who are remote, the licensure of the teachers, the number of people that we have out at a time. So I think we've just got to let people know that when we go to in-person, we're going to do a good job, as good a job as any school district in North Carolina to do. But we, I think people need to know upfront that it may look different from school to school. In larger schools, it may look different inside a department, or inside a grade level. So, so that's the bad part. It will not be neat and clean at all. It, it cannot be one size fits all. You know, it cannot be everyone's reading from the same thing at the same time on the same grade level. That's just not possible. It just, it just can't be that way. Can we do it, and can we do it well? Yes, we can. I believe that with what we can control, we can do well. Another reason that it needs to look different is our students have not been with us physically for a while, and we have students at 15 schools, and the Learning Center, which we mentioned earlier, and they're at different places. Some of them have maintained their learning really, really well, and some of them have lost a little bit, and, and some of them may have lost a lot. And because of that, everything will not look the same. The, the one thing, and this is where we may want to pause and talk, if you all want to, and certainly, we can go back to any of this at any point in time that I'm mentioning. The one thing that really is outside of our control is staffing losses caused by people who have been close, close contacts to COVID-19, and they are to be isolated until they're waiting for someone else's test to come back, or they're waiting for their test to come back, or they've been quarantined because someone in their home is positive, and they may or may not be positive themselves. That's the one thing we do not control. I don't want to, to say something that I might regret later, but we really believe in talking with other school districts who have done some Plan B, and with, with ourselves, that we don't think that we would anticipate a lot of employees who would test positive. We've had 10, and I think that's about the right number. Jason and I tried to count them earlier this year since mid-March, and 10 out of over 1,000 employees is a pretty small percentage. The, the concern that we have, that, that I just want everyone to know about, it, should we run into this down the road, is that we might have a, a group of close contacts in a department, or in a grade level, and if those people are assigned to in-person instruction, that could cause a scramble. I think worst-case scenario, you have a situation that happened, that has happened in a couple high schools mainly, where they just didn't have enough staff to, to operate for a week or two, and you had to stop the in-person for a week or two until you got your staff back. But I think that is a big, that is something that's outside of our control. I am not worried about people coming. Our parents, and most of our teachers, and most of our students say they want to come and be in-person. I'm not too worried about us social distancing and those kinds of things, because we've done pretty well with that, with the programs that we've had in place. I am worried about things that we may not control, and so I just want to, to throw that out there. And before I elaborate on that a little bit more, are there any questions about that? You may clarify whatever you like, but don't touch the mic.
Help her. Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, and not contradict my boss, but I think what he was trying to say when he said, "Now, we're going to ask teachers to do both," that doesn't mean we're going to ask teachers to teach all their remote kids and all their in-person kids. Okay? I think what, you want to clarify yourself? I mean, I just didn't want teachers to think we're going to ask them to do both, because that's, yeah.
Yeah. As a group, we're required to provide both. We want to be very, very careful about not having individual teachers do that. There might be a case or two where it works out, and they want to do it, and they're good at it, but for the most part, we would not expect them to do both simultaneously for two different groups that are moving in, and for a remote group. So that, that was part of the reason for leading off and saying that it must be manageable for them.
Now, the teachers will still be doing remote, because they'll have one, one group of kids in class teaching them, and then the, the group will still be at home doing remote learning. So they're still going to be doing a semi-remote learning, just not doing the specific kids' remote learning only, and their in-class kids. Is that what you're trying to say?
Yeah, that's, that's a, a great distinction. The teachers would do in-person with the students who have chosen in-person, and remote for those students. We will have to have other teachers or other procedures and processes to do the, the people who are remote only. We don't think it's fair to ask a teacher to do in-person, remote with the in-person group when they're not there, and remote only. So, but we think we have the staffing, at least to start with, so that we can designate people to do that. But that's, because of that complexity, that is one of the reasons I said early on that it will not be one-size-fits-all neat and clean. But we're very confident that we have great teachers. We have a long history of having strong academic programs and successes, and, and we feel good about pulling off that part of it. It may just look a little different, because it will be a little different.
Let me ask you a question. Is each school going to do that individually? So it's almost as if you're running a remote academy at school for one group, then you've got your in-person group, but you got a front load when they're on the remote side.
Don't touch the mic. Get sexy. Yeah, I think that's a, that's why it looks different. And let me give you some examples. Let's say Bethel Elementary, they only have five kids that want to stay remote. They probably can't designate one of their fifth-grade teachers to be the remote person. But they may, and I, you know, have no idea, this isn't what they're doing, I'm making this all up, but you know, they may want to rotate that throughout their fifth-grade teachers to help with those five kids and instruct them. They may want to, you know, let one of their teachers teach all the reading, and one of their teachers teach the science. They may want to co-teach. They may want to do a, a combination. Each school is so different, and they're going to, but the principals told me, "Okay, guys, I'm speaking for you, but I hope I'm right. You want the ability to do it for what's best for their staff and their kids. If they need help," you know, early on, we thought, we talked about a program and, and having that support. We can buy resource support for them, but we feel like our people can do a lot of it. But like Dr. Rogers, if you only have, you know, if you only had one Spanish teacher, then it's kind of hard for that person to do all their remote, too. But they may want to. Some teachers have expressed interest, and they want to keep their kids kind of alive and try to keep them together all the time. That's really, really tough. But for an experienced teacher with great management and great knowledge of the curriculum, they might pull something like that off. But I think that is a lot to ask for our young teachers and, and other people, too. But the principals know their situation, and so what we're going to do, well...
Go ahead.
Yeah, we are going to meet with them again tomorrow. We've given them time to go back and kind of think about it, and look at their numbers. They've been looking at this, and we told them, "Just start thinking through in your mind, kind of what you want this to look like." And it could be that a smaller school, they may only have five kids, and or three kids in a grade level. They may need to piggyback with another school. If they're really, really small, sometimes they don't have the resource. And so, well, they know they're going to have to help each other out. So we're, we're looking at that, too. We've got a small middle school. We've got a couple of small elementaries. So they'll have to have these individual situations, and it matters by grade level within the building. So anyway, that's, that's going So anyway, that's, that's going to be the hard part for administrators and, and they're struggling and that's going to be tough. But it's one of those things with this plan, we got to figure out and we'll need some grace on that, you know, and y'all understand that. It's, it's, it's going to be scheduling and that piece of it. Also, within the survey I didn't mention, I wanted to say is, you know, we did ask about bus transportation too there. So, um, we did ask that question also.
One question I thought too is that, uh, okay, so you've got your, so many kids virtually online. I've had a question brought to me before and I'm just asking if, okay, we're going to try to do it in-house. Have we looked at any outside contracting companies if it came to, like I say, if you've got a certain specific school, like say you don't have enough teachers to teach remotely and in-person on a certain subject? And have we, have we had other people approach us or have we thought about any?
Yeah, um, Mrs. Barker has done that work. I'll give you the short answer. And if you want more information, you can ask her. She and the curriculum staff have, uh, vetted and researched two companies that could help us. And we have no intent, uh, to use them unless we have to. Okay? There are two reputable companies, uh, that could help us in different ways if we needed that help. But we, we have not entered into any kind of agreement with them and we do not want to. Okay?
Okay. And you did mention, yeah, we won't have a teacher that's going to have in-person and having to do remote at the same time. But say if you've got a, one of the trade, like the, uh, CTE classes, some of your trade classes, you don't have two or three welding teachers or you don't have, so if you've got so many kids virtually online on that, really about, about that teacher, are they going to have to do both them? Are we going to find some other welding instructor to? That's fun.
Yeah, we, we, we did, we did purchase some CTE software. And you want to talk a little bit about that and CTE in general?
We've got some kids in class, but then we've got some.
Right.
Remote.
So let's like welding. Um, I was speaking with Ms. Glance today just about that. What she's done with these numbers is she's gone and run the class list for those hands-on classes. And so she's looking at the students that are in that class that selected all remote. And I'm sure the principals have too, because some classes like carpenter and welding, if you select it all remote, that's going to be hard to pull off that hands-on part. If the week on and week off, they can come in, do their hands-on stuff, front load, get some bookwork done the next week, Mr. Rogers. But it's the all-remote option, if they're in a strictly hands-on class, that we think. What we could do there though is maybe say, um, could you take another CTE class this semester? And then maybe at the community college next semester, sign up for welding or try to get that here. So they were looking and, and Lynn Ray, who works for our high schools, they are really looking at that. Try to get our kids, if they need to be rescheduled based on this, then we can do that.
Because I'd say maybe they've signed up for, say, a machine shop.
Yeah.
And then they're going to say, oh, we're doing virtually online. Well, okay. So you're going to have to cancel that class. You're going to have to take something else. I know that's, I know this is a nightmare. Like I say, we're still in the process.
But if they're in shop, they can come one week and they can do tons of hands-on that week.
Be there at all.
And then the next, yeah, if they're not going to be there at all, that's going to be.
Class is going to be hard for them to take.
They won't be able to get the hands-on. So that's why we want to try to keep them in CT, but maybe direct them in a different program for this semester and then, you know, try to look at some other options for them. That's why she wanted to get those numbers and look at that. And she was working on that today.
And I was just saying, you like to say your scheduling classes how we usually do. Okay, this child's going to take, Mr. Davis is going to take so many classes this semester. I guess that's still going to be a nightmare too of having to reschedule what kids were originally going to take before the COVID.
Yeah, remember when Dr. Will said this wasn't going to be, yeah. I mean, this is not planned to, um, you know, this is going to be really, really hard on a lot of people. But the, the good part of that is, you know, kids will be back in, in a building. But it's going to come, but, um, there's a lot of difficult situations that'll have to be worked out.
Be things that we will have to have as a work in progress. And I do understand that totally. I mean, I've got some other questions related to hands-on classes like computer classes, drafting keyboards, all that stuff. Uh, in between classes, you know, this is something really later on. Uh, do you have to sanitize all the room down completely down in between classes? If you're going out and touching machinery and sometimes a welder's face mask, stuff like that? Keep wearing the same face mask the next child's gate in the next class, uh, welding and stuff like that. I just.
Yeah, I will answer your other question, Dr. Rogers, and that's Dr. Putnam's area. But, um, we did purchase two servers at our high schools and they will be able to now. The drafting software, um, some of the machining software, they will be able to, um, use that software now on their Chromebooks. Whereas before the Chromebooks wouldn't handle that. So we're excited about that. And in the long run, they can instead of placing labs, they can just replace Chromebooks. And the, the students will be able to use that. So.
Ready old chalkboards and paper anymore?
Well, not when they're.
Drafting tools and, uh.
It sounds to me like on the in-person side, uh, blended.
Yeah.
That some of the, some of the workarounds may be a little wonky, but we can figure out how to make it work. On the remote side of things, just to be, just for clarity, there may be some classes that just aren't going to be able to be offered remotely.
Yeah, we're.
Fair statement?
Yes.
If you're talking about welding.
They could, but they would never get the hands-on portion. That would be very difficult. I don't think they would want to when they realize, you know, but I don't want to speak for every kid. But I think that's why she wanted to look and see how many people.
Yeah, I guess I'm really not making a statement for me. I'm just trying to clarify for anybody that might be listening in is, you know, there may be some limitations.
Yes.
To remote. I think it's only a fair assumption to make.
I, I think that's a very fair assumption. I, I wouldn't say that we have gone so far as to say we're not going to offer this course. Uh, we will let our teachers and principals and people at the school see if they can figure that out with, um, the software availability that we have. But I do think you're right. In general, um, we should have more flexibility with the in-person. Even though, again, I just want to repeat this because I think we'll hear this for a long time. It, it's not going to be neat and clean. Uh, do we think we can pull it off academically? Sure we can. I mean, that's, that's what we do here. You know, we, we do stuff that's hard and we do it really well. But it will look differently and it will, it will be more difficult. Um, and like I said, we've not really written off any courses yet, but, but the remote only, um, for some classes, in particular, hands-on classes, will be a little more difficult. I think Dr. Putnam's going to speak to the equipment.
Yes, uh, we just were provided some allowances with athletics. If you remember, they can now use, uh, balls between them, uh, for soccer and football and basketball. And so welding leads, anything like that would have to be cleaned between groups. Otherwise contamination on one set of lead, welding leads would infect every class. Um, so again, I don't know how large the concern is, but it's not up to us, uh, to play the role of health professionals. Um, Dr. Javen himself said it's a pretty puny virus and they're not aware of in, any environmental spread uh, through inanimate objects. It's mostly respiration. However, I think our due diligence would be to cling between classes and between uses.
And are we going to have, who's going to have to do that? Instructors? Are we going to put another burden on the teachers? Are we going to have some custodial people that's going to be available to do that kind of work or?
Well, that is, uh.
That's something that, I know that's something we still have to work out, but.
Yeah.
These teachers already, I mean, now with the cyber attack too on top of what they're trying to do, it's, it's hurting a lot of things.
In our opening message to staff, we, we instructed them and let them know it's going to take a Disney World approach to cleaning. Everyone's going to have to take a.
Everybody's got to do their part. Thank you.
Are individual schools going to have different schedules? I mean, you've, you've given the principals a whole lot of latitude there, which is good. But are they going to have the same start time and all that?
Go ahead.
Yeah, don't, don't think the high schools can have very different schedules because of the connection to the college and college courses. And we've been talking to the college in particular, uh, Ms. Barker and Lori Fox. And the, and they're still working out what they're doing in person, which is more along the CTE side. And what they're doing remotely, which is more along the university transfer. But I, I do think the high school schedule will be very much like, uh, a, a more normal schedule and what we have been doing since school started. Um, again, we'll do a good job with teaching the standards, uh, because that's, that's what we do. We're pretty good at that. We have great teachers and other people who can do that. But now this, the, I'm not, I'm not going to promise you that the schedule at Hazelwood and the schedule at Bethel, which are similar sized schools, will look the same.
That's fine. I just, I'm just curious. I knew you'd have to have some various variability there.
Yeah.
Is that going to be due to like transportation issues as well? Is that going to play a part in start times or anything?
Don't think transportation, well, let me let, uh, Dr. Putnam speak to that. We crunched a lot of numbers and he has prepared a, a, a communication to principals. Did you send it today?
Yeah, it's already sent. Um, uh, in preparation, uh, should this board decide to go back to in-person, uh, just want to be prepared. Uh, we're looking at, uh, ridership of seventeen hundred and sixty-five, uh, students who say they intend to ride the bus. And as Ms. Barker said, not all the results are in, but seventeen hundred and sixty-five. Um, if you look at a rotation where you have two pods, Pod A, Pod B, you cut that number in half, it's about eight fifty. Uh, we have seventy routes. Um, you divide that into, um, the seventy buses or seventy routes into eight fifty. If it works out to where that's evenly distributed as it were before COVID, uh, then we should be okay. However, there will be anomalies where, um, one route, you know, maybe all one hundred that normally are along that route say, yeah, we're riding. Which means then we've got to, you know, with, with an occupancy of twenty-two, uh, it's a sixty-six capacity bus. But you can only, and that's figuring three kids to a seat. But you, we would only be able to put one person to a seat, which means twenty-two. You're going to have to make over four runs, five runs along that one route. Now, what we would do is divert other buses that might not have any. But a soul may not have chosen to ride, but that's the minutia that we have to work through in, in calculating where transportation will work.
Nightmare.
What's the, what's that, that ridership of seventeen sixty-five? How does that compare to pre-COVID ridership?
Um, I, I, I don't really know. It's probably, it's probably about a third. That sounds about right, about a third. And that's a, that's a guess. Educated guess, but a guess.
Historically, a little less than half have ridden. And so that number would represent about a third of the normal ridership.
Right.
Um, just since we're talking about transportation, is, I know, um, a lot of our funding for buses comes due to the participation of riders on the bus. With us limiting the number and a lot of children not riding that, is there any kind of waivers that the, the state has told us that we would get for that, for this year, for that?
Well, as best we can determine with this, if, lack of a better term, as wonky a year as we've had, determining an efficiency rating, which is what you're speaking to. Uh, how efficient are we running the routes? And how efficiently do we pick up kids and, you know, pack the bus full and, and deliver them to school and take them home? So that's the efficiency rating. That would certainly, the efficiency rating, which is how we're funded, would certainly be impacted if they were able to keep track of it. Uh, with that said though, they would have to, uh, impact every school in North Carolina because everybody's efficiency rating would look like ours. So good question.
Okay, I have, I have some other bullets and we'll just, let me get through those because I want to make sure I cover everything. Um, and, uh, and then again, we'll, we'll talk about whatever we need to, um, backup. Uh, just what we would, we want to cover all the bases. The other, um, the, the only other thing that really is outside of our control and, and most of the rest of it is, but the, the one thing I mentioned already about isolations and quarantines that, that we really can't control, um, uh, because of what people may do away from work. But the other thing is if we have, uh, new employees, not just teachers, but new employees, and they have not, um, accumulated a lot of leave. And they're required to isolate because they're close contact with someone in their home or in their, you know, things that they do away from, away from work. Uh, there is some federal leave and Jason's going to do a general overview on all of this in a minute. So you may have some questions for him. There is some federal leave that exists through December. But there is the possibility that some of our newer employees may be required to isolate and would not have leave to take or be eligible for leave. Uh, based upon, uh, when they might need to be out. Uh, in February or November or April or whenever. So a, again, I just want everyone to know that upfront. Um, and you know, that, that is a possibility. So, um, again, just covering all the bases. A lot of our employees are not new, you know, they're folks like me and they have leave even. If they are, um, required to isolate, uh, in, in some instances, that's covered uh, by one of the provisions federally that Mr. Hines will talk about. Uh, or they can make it up with their own leave. But there may be some situations where people, uh, people just don't have leave. And again, completely outside of our control because we won't be able to control who's a close contact other than what we do on campus. Jason will go over all of that in a minute. So the, uh, uh, other factors is, uh, right now, and I'm not trying, again, not trying to be negative. I, I think we can pull this off. But I just, I don't want us to have something come up a month or two or three from now and, and everyone not know that this was a possibility. Uh, in a situation, if we were to have a, a group of people out, we have about seventy-five available subs right now. We usually have more than twice that many. And, uh, and we have seventy-five people. Jason's has worked on that. Uh, he's gotten a commitment from seventy-five that they're willing to substitute. But many of them, uh, for, um, very good reasons have said, you know, I'll be glad to do that. But I really don't want to work at a bunch of different places, which makes sense. Uh, I'll be glad to do that, but I only want to work here or here and here. So that's a factor too. We may have enough staff people that if we have a group out, we can cover effectively and we may not. And we may be in a situation that, um, that happened in a school district to the west of us where they did have to shut down a couple of schools for a period of time until they could get their staff back. Okay. Well, and again, um, getting closer to the end of my bullets and then we'll just talk about, you know, anything else that we want to talk about here and try to answer any of your questions. Um, I just want to repeat the fact that we'll need to do things differently. And we'll just need to make sure that our school plans that we have for teachers and their work is very, very manageable. We've already talked a little bit about that, but I think we may have to say that to the community and to our teachers and to everyone in the coming days and weeks. So they'll understand this is not all face-to-face and this is not all remote. It, it's a different animal for lack of a better word. And we'll just need to make sure that we don't overassign our teachers and that what they have, they can do and do, and do really, really well. Uh, just a, a couple of closing thoughts for me and, and then we can talk about other stuff and answer your questions. COVID nineteen's really been hard on a lot of us. It has. Uh, people have lost jobs, people we know have lost jobs. Uh, we, I think at this point, we all know someone who's been positive. Many of us know people who've passed away, but it's just been, um, you know, it's been really difficult. And I want to acknowledge that for the students who are out there that want to come back to school and the parents who want them to come and the teachers. We know everybody's been through a lot. And if, having done that and understanding that, I just want to ask, um, people publicly to do what we ask our teachers and staff people to do back in mid-August. teachers and staff people to do back in mid-August. We have got to continue to work on relationships. That's what you do when times are tough. You rally around each other. Uh, you help each other, um, uh, be successful. You help each other feel safe. It will, it will not be a, a perfect process by any means, but we just need to, to realize that everybody's had a tough time, even if they don't look like it. You know, even if they look like, you know, they just walked out of a spa and they've got all the money in the world and they're, and they're, and they, they, they look like their, their spiritual lives altogether and everything else. Uh, this has been very impactful. So, we'll just need to remember that, uh, and be helpful. And, and we want people to know that we've had a number of conversations with mental health providers, um, and other folks who, uh, will help us as things come up with individual, uh, students or teachers. Again, I wanted to repeat, we're, before we bring you a specific recommendation on Monday about, you know, is it, you know, you go Monday, Tuesday, and you're off Wednesday, and then the other group goes Thursday, Friday, or do we go a week at a time? Uh, we wanna, we wanna go back and meet with our principals tomorrow. We wanna talk to them. We wanna hear about things, uh, all the good things that they're working on. But we also wanna know about roadblocks that they have run into that we may not know about yet. You know, they may have lost, um, already half of their, one of their departments or part of a grade level. So, we wanna hear all that, and that will help us, uh, prepare for our meeting on Monday. And then, uh, certainly, uh, we'll come on Monday and have a, uh, another conversation with you folks. And we just want, again, not trying to end the discussion 'cause I know you probably have other questions, but we want you all to please feel free to talk to us if you have, uh, things that you think about, that you wanna ask about after tonight, before Monday. Uh, it's a big decision and it's very clear that our community wants to go to school. It's very clear that instructionally, we'll do as good a job as anyone. But, uh, it, there, you know, there is a pandemic and there are a couple of things outside of our control. So, I'll just pause, that's, those are the bullets that I had, and we'll, we'll entertain any additional questions.
I have one question. You know, it, it, and I don't know how I wanna phrase this, but, um, because of Plan B, we're, we're literally creating a whole other new learning environment within the system. So, now we're operating a hybrid system plus a whole new other. Or is, is the state taking that into consideration as they begin to allocate funds? Are we gonna have some additional funds for personnel? 'Cause you know, you, what you may end up with, you take a smaller school and you have, um, the wrong mix of people, remote versus in-person. They may end up just a, one person short. You go to a larger school, they may be two, two or three people short. I- is, is there some kind of funding from the state that takes that into consideration? And if not, is that something locally we're taking into consideration?
Yeah, we've had a lot of discussions about that, so I'm glad you brought that up. Uh, one thing that, uh, it looks like is going to happen is they will hold us harmless on our ADM for this year, which means we should not have a loss. I don't know if the governor signed that or not, but I do remember a day or two ago that that was passed by the legislature. So, the general funding, if the governor has signed that, looks stable. Uh, we did receive some COVID money. A lot of it was very much earmarked. You could buy computers so every kid, uh, every student in person or at home could have a computer to work on. Uh, we did, uh, have the ability to purchase, uh, hotspots. We did have some funds, um, uh, to work on, uh, to spend on, um, temperature checks and, um, PPE, hand sanitizer protective devices. There are some funds that were provided to us that are not as closely restricted, but we have tried to be very, very careful with those because it is September and we have no idea what February's going to look like. And so, could we go out and hire a couple of people? Sure. Could we add a lot of people to every school? Not with that money. Uh, and if we did that and, and, and could have covered it by, um, sharing staff and so forth, we might need, we might very well need those funds in November or January or February or April, who knows? So, there, there are some funds there, uh, but it's not a whole lot of money. And we've spent some of it. We spent some of it to, uh, order the additional, uh, hotspots. And, um, um, so there's some funds there. What we wanna try to do, if we can, is do it with the staff that we have. Uh, if we start hiring people because of state and federal regulations, we'll need to make sure that we do that equitably because you get your hands slapped if, uh, this school has an extra teacher and that one doesn't. So, we've had a lot of conversations about that. I don't know if I've answered your question or not.
Yeah, y- you have, and I, I, I do think that we've done it. You guys have done a good job of spending the money in the right places as it's coming in. A lot of it is earmarked. The, uh, the only, the only thing I wanna say is, our teachers in Haywood County schools are very resilient. I mean, they will, they will bounce back and, and perform. However, um, we, we have to keep in the back of our minds, and I know you do. I'm just saying this to, to say it out loud, is that, uh, they're, they're really having to do work they didn't sign up for at this point. And, and it's, they're having to work very hard and very long hours and, and, uh, and we just need to make sure that we're seeing, understanding and not allowing them to get theirself into a place at the end of the year they say, phew, I'm not doing this again. 'Cause we wanna keep our teachers in place. We got good ones. We wanna keep them in place, and we wanna make sure that if there are areas that we can ma- maneuver things around to, to take some of the burden off the teachers, we, we need to be able to have the flexibility to do that. And I know you will. That is just one of those statements need to be said out loud.
Yep. Very well said.
Yes.
Very well said.
Yeah, well said. That's one thing I was thinking about, too. You got your teachers, and I don't know how it's working, but you say, I mean, I know it's working well. But you've got your online te, I mean, your teachers doing virtual online, but say they have maybe five kids out of twenty. They can't get them online, they can't get contact to them, and all this. And they're also trying to get in touch with that child, too. That's putting extra on them. Is there not, does that bucket might need to be passed to SRO officers? Can they be trying to find that family? I mean, we're, we're putting that on teachers as well. I think that we're saying, okay, oh, well, you gotta find that kid that's, that's missing out of your class. And that's, they're saying, well, I gotta teach these other twenty right now, and I can't find those five. And I'm thinking, how, how is that set up to where who helps them? Who helps them find these lost kids that we've got out there that's not made contact or not signed in on their classes and?
Yeah, I, I had a conversation with Alicia Glance, uh, this morning. She supervises the social workers. And so, they will, uh, at this point, the, the teachers and schools have gotten, most of them, you can see from the intent information. But, but we, I, I'd had the conversation with Alicia earlier today for the social workers to, to try to help us find some of those people, too.
And I was saying, I don't want the teachers to have to have that extra burden, too, and?
Yeah, and our, you know, our principals, too. Today I had a call from our principal's student that showed up one time and had only completed one assignment. So, you know, the social worker and the principal were gonna go out and make contact, you know, with that family that hadn't answered the phone. And so, those are the kinda things that they're doing out there. I think the teacher's inclination is to always call and check on a kid. It's kinda the first stop. And then after that, it's kinda, you know, as the principal, you get those things turned over to you after a while when you've tried and tried, so. But they're trying, they're calling them and trying to get them.
They're trying so hard.
Sometimes one call to a parent is very helpful. But sometimes, you know, there needs to be an extra step, and they're, they're working on that, too.
And that's why I know, 'cause any of our resource officers are not actually having to be in the school building 'cause there's no children there yet. Hopefully, we'll have that in there soon. But, uh, that's something I think, well, what, what else are they? What else can they be doing, like you say, to help make this process come together? And, ever, like I say, everybody's gotta work together on it. And even as a board, we've all got to work to get these kids educated the best way we can, so. That's, that's just, I was just wondering about how that, how that's working and how it operates. Thank you.
Um, I did have something, 'cause we're talking about, the subs didn't wanna move from school to school. And you said we were gonna share the resources. Are we gonna be able to move? If a teacher, what Bobby was talking about, if one school has an extra teacher, will they actually move to another school or will they just do it remotely or something?
Well, the, the answer is, uh, we'll share them when it works and when it makes sense. I think at this point in time, we don't know if we have a lot of extra ones yet because the-
I understand.
The principals are still getting the intent information in and they're building their plans. Uh, and if more people decided to come at that original school, we might need them back. So, but we do have, um, you know, we, we typically do have, uh, more people with a teaching license assigned to a school than, than are actually in a classroom. And, uh, we have, you know, situations in high schools where, you know, people have planning, and we wouldn't ever ask anyone to, to give up their planning every single day, all day long. But I think for a period or for a, 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 a moment in time, we can cover for each other. We've done that for decades. So, we, we will ask our schools, uh, principals and teachers to talk together and to come up with the best plans. But, um, you know, will we move people literally from one school to another? I, I don't know at this point if we would.
'Cause I was looking, if, if we have one student at the HCLC and we have five teachers, they might could help out with the other high schools some way or another.
Yeah, they, they, they'll have more than one. That's just one that responded to the intent survey. They have, they'll probably-
That would be a hundred percent blended, right, instead of fifty, if it's just one?
Yeah, they, uh, yeah, they, they have a lot more students than that. That's just one that returned it, that responded to the, uh, intent information.
And I'll just add something, um, in comments to your question. It's a good question. Our schools are really stretched. We've, we've, uh, ha, already had to divert staff to make sure we had meals, uh, served. We're nearing a million meals served, um, uh, since this, uh, COVID, uh, took over. Uh, and then also childcare, so they're, i- it, our schools are stretched. Our staffs are stretched. And, you know, it, it's hard to create normal when you, when no normal option exists. It's very tough. And, uh, I think our folks have done it very, very well. Uh, but there are limits, uh, and we, we are nearing that limit if, if we haven't already reached that limit. But, good question. Well, you mentioned childcare. I just gotta ask, I mean, how is, I knew we mentioned in the past that maybe trying to find some childcare for our teachers on the east and west end or something like that. I ain't know if there's any development more than that. Yeah, we have, um, um, instructed principals to make sure, uh, staff members, children are taken care of at the site, and they got a couple of options at the school site rather than an east-west end. Simply because we felt like principals understand, uh, the nuances of their school and the limitations of their staff members. And so, um, the, the, the only real expectation is make sure we had care for every staff member's, uh, child. Um, school age, that is school age. And, um, so far, that has been very successful. And, uh, I'm not aware of anyone not having care for their child at the school. And that, again, a credit to principals. That's a credit to countless number of staff members who pitched in and said, I'll be that person, uh, to help supervise, uh, kids. And, uh, so, again, you, you factor all of that in with the, the meals and the childcare and what have you, it, and then, oh, by the way, let's make sure they're, all of our kids are getting the instruction and education they deserve. That's, that's a pretty tall task, so, uh, uh, but yes, that, that is taken care of, and we have provision, should we do an in-person, uh, return to school uh, for those, uh, kids to continue, or those staff members to continue to have childcare. There was another question with them having, with the teachers that have children at school age. So, okay, well then, what if my child goes to school two days and the other, and they don't go the other two, but I have to teach five days? What are we gonna do in that frame? So, I, I don't know, like I said, it's one of them things that gotta work out, but. Yeah, that, and said, oh, I'd like for my child to go all five days. I mean, say we had a five-day class.
Well, there's some equity issues with that. Uh, the state hits us pretty hard with providing equity in education, and it, it would be saying that teachers' children get twice the instruction as a non-teacher's child. And so, uh, what we wanna do is take care of our teachers and make sure their school-aged children have a place to be. We don't want to open up the equity question for-
Well, I knew that was a fact.
Non, non-friendly attorneys, uh, Mr. Smathers, whom I come after.
Well, I told him that, I said, no, that, that don't work, 'cause-
Now, I'm not sure, yeah, I'm not sure that some school systems won't do that, but we think we can take care of the childcare at school for, um, staff, not just teachers, but staff, school-aged children without creating a instructional equity issue. Okay, I don't have any questions, but I got a few observations. It's pretty clear that we've got seventy-three percent that want to be back in class. And, you know, unfortunately, there will be situations arise, whether it be testing, whether it be quarantine. And so, uh, I guess my, uh, observation is that we'll have to, those will all have to be handled on a case-by-case basis as they come up. And, uh, you don't know what that looks like until it gets here. You know, there's not a clear roadmap for anybody to return from a pandemic. Uh, so, all I can say is I want to thank every staff member for their willingness, willingness to return and to help us work through this and try to get back to some kind of normalcy and get these kids back in class and get education going again. So, uh, my hat's off to every one of y'all and all the staff throughout the schools wherever.
Me.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. They, they've been getting after it even without a lot of students in the building. Uh, we, we have good people. We certainly do.
Very good. Any other questions before we go to the next subject?
Uh, Dr. Putnam, I think, uh, central office move?
I do have one question real quick. Um, with the fact that, that there, we'll be going back in the classrooms, hopefully, and there's a chance that we may have to close down for a couple of weeks or something. Hopefully, that won't happen, but there's a chance. As far as calendars, are we still gonna try to get the first semester done by Christmas like we were planning on for the high schools and stuff? Have we talked about calendars and days? And are we gonna be able to get those hours in and, and things like that?
Yeah, yes, sir. That would be, that would be our plan. I had a question from a, uh, a national, um, outlet today about all those days you've missed. And my, my general response to them was, well, we miss, we miss over nine days a year due to weather, and we have floods and blizzards and, and a lot of times, we can make that time up. And we just don't know yet, uh, if we've only really been in school, uh, less than a month. So, we will, we will work as best possible to finish the first semester by the, uh, Christmas holiday, uh, winter break. And then, uh, you know, we'll just have to see what kinda winter we have. We have a mild winter, we might be able to make up a good bit of time. If we don't, we won't. So, you, you, you all know how that goes. Y'all have dealt with that for a long time.
Well, hopefully, with everybody getting so, uh, uh, educated on virtual learning, when we have snow days from now on, we can just do a virtual learning day and keep on moving. Don't have to worry about those anymore.
We have five built in.
Yeah, right.
Very good.
All right, you ready for me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, so I wanted to talk to you about the central office office move. Um, we have a scheduled week for move. It's it's tentative, but I think it'll hold. November thirtieth through October fourth will be when we actually vacate our, uh, current facility and move to Central Elementary School. Um, we have been down, uh, we being me and, uh, Josh Mees and Kim Guffey and others, uh, to evaluate that facility. Um, it has enough space, uh, for our current staff if we double up in rooms. Uh, so for example, I will share a classroom, uh, with Ms. Swager, my assistant. Uh, Ms. Barker will, uh, share a room, uh, with her assistant, uh, Ms. Julie Davis. And we've been down and and actually put signs outside the rooms so that the ITC can come in and say, okay, we need two phone drops here, uh, we need two internet drops here. Um, it lets maintenance know how many desks go where. Um, so we've we've got a preliminary sketch of what that's going to look like and where everyone's going to be. We invited st- central office staff down today to Central Elementary, kept it open all day. They got to go by, evaluate what the shortcomings of their new space might be. Uh, I need more lockable cabinets. Um, I'm going to need a filing cabinet to replace that, uh, storage space that I had at my old space. Um, and so today was, uh, a real good intake to see what was needed in the in the temporary space that we're going to occupy at Central Elementary. On that week of November thirtieth through October fourth, uh, it's going to be, uh, it seems like everywhere I go, I have to move something.
Yeah.
November thirtieth through
December.
December fourth.
Okay.
I may have said it, filed it up. I got it right the first time and filed it up the second time. But yeah, it seems like everywhere I go, I end up having to move something. Um, Ms. Barker got me into the last move. Thank you for that. Appreciate that. But the good news is it it means I know what to do, um, in this situation. And so we will pair a maintenance person up with and move by floor. So we'll start with third floor or second floor, first floor, uh, whatever the order may be. And we'll pair a maintenance person up with each employee in in the first level on that move day and and a maintenance person with each employee on the second level on that move day. Uh, we're going to begin gathering boxes, um, and we're going to ask folks in central office to to begin. And I put this all in an email to them, so I'm just sharing really. Um, put all of their loose items into a box, write their name on it. And then we're going to get some small pallets that go through doorways. And, uh, we'll begin placing those, uh, boxed loose, uh, loose items onto the small pallets for a quick and easy move um, onto a new trailer. Uh, thank you for the new trailer. Uh, it's that's going to come in handy. Um, and, uh, we'll carry it down to central and that person will accompany, uh, that our employee or our staff member from central office in moving it in, uh, to the new space. And we'll go from there. So that's the plan. Uh, move from our current space, uh, to Central Elementary, uh, for a temporary stay until our new building is or our new renovation's complete. Any questions for me on that?
What's the condition of the building? I know there was several maintenance issues and different things that's that sort of happened over the last couple of years. So what what kind of condition is that building in right now?
Um, the main building is in decent shape. We've had several break-ins. Um, the the floors and walls and windows obviously need to be cleaned really, really good. Um, anytime a building sits, it gets nasty, um, pretty readily. I don't, you know, how that happens with nothing stirring in it, but it does. Um, and so it'll need a really good clean. There are obviously upgrades we'd like to see, uh, if if that building were ever to go into operation as a school. Uh, we're mindful that, uh, this is a temporary stay for us. We're not creating partitions. We're not, uh, putting down new floors. Um, uh, all the spaces that anyone would be asked to occupy are safe. Uh, they're not the most attractive spaces, uh, but they will have the necessary internet drops and phone system, uh, that they need. Uh, so they'll have everything they need for their work environment. It just will not be that pretty. Uh, now that's our main building. Uh, the K-one building is in, uh, much worse shape, but we will not be occupying the K-one building. Um, we, again, if we double up in classrooms in the main building, we should be okay. Good question.
In honor of Stephen, if he can't be here, uh, what's this, what's the additional cost of moving?
We don't, we don't really know that yet. Um, we really don't know that. It's going to, you know, we'll have to reconnect servers uh, to the internet. We'll have to reconnect phone lines. Um, but we are really going to try not to spend any more money than we have to. Um, it just doesn't make sense to spend money on, um, a central office move for a temporary stay. So we're going to keep it to a minimum and and just to be perfectly honest, I don't know the answer to your question.
When you say an internet drop and a phone drop, you're literally talking about drop the line in.
Yes, that's correct.
Uh, I think, I think just adding to, uh, Dr. Putnam's, uh, answer, we should be able to tell you what it costs uh, as we go along and certainly at the end, and that's information we can make available uh, to to you all and need to make available to you all as the board, uh, who approves the local budget. Um, you know, uh, humor is is in timing and I've delayed my timing here, but I just wanted to say that based upon what Mr. Putnam's comments, our our new mantra might be, it might not look good, but we'll get it done. So that that may be our mantra, at least through the end of, uh, twenty twenty. I'm sorry, I couldn't resist that for those of you listening. It's either laugh or cry.
Dave, on the annex, when it, when we're projecting to be finished with the
So bid documents, um, and just to make sure anyone who didn't hear the question, uh, projected, uh, timeline for the new facility is is what Mr. Henson asked. Um, and so bid documents for the new, uh, renovation to our new space across the road at Annex Two. Um, those bid documents go out, uh, this coming Monday, September fourteenth. And those did bid documents, uh, indicate that they expect to completion, uh, by the end of April. So, uh, end of April would be a worst-case scenario. Obviously, if a motivated contractor were to procure that job and move at a quicker rate, it could be earlier than April, but it can't be later than April. The end of April.
In that old, uh, old facility that we're renovating, uh, sorry, there's a little sarcasm towards Airville County, but anyway. Uh, is there possibilities that we might could move into that building in phases as certain parts completed? Or is it going to be just a one-time in there and go?
The the logistics of that would be far more complicated, uh, because people need to know where they can find us, what office we occupy and where to come see us. Uh, also, you're you're trying to maintain day-to-day operations while doing multiple moves over time. It it's a good thought. Um, we we have thought of that for, you know, moving furniture. Uh, but the reality is they can't start moving furniture out of, say, Jason's office. He's going, you know, he's going to need to be able to operate out of that office. So the move has to happen very, very quick and within a small timeframe. Otherwise, operations are affected.
So people are going to be in in the temporary space for six to seven months, depending on when your floor moves, et cetera. And, uh, and we're looking at April or May, I should say, begin, beginning to mid-May before the moves complete.
Um, yes, if if, uh, but again, I think the same thing can occur. And it also depends on what option, uh, this board would select in the way of casework. You know, if if desks are going to be built in and cabinets are going to be built in in the new, uh, facility, um, Mr. Rogers' new old facility, I didn't want to contradict you there, um, the new renovation will say that. Um, if all of that is a part of, uh, the selected option, uh, for, uh, for that work, then it'll go much quicker. Um, but again, because of day-to-day operations, it's going to have to occur in in a very, very small window.
Well, the good news is twenty twenty-one's coming and things have got to go smoother.
Amen.
I can only hope. Any other questions for Dr. Putnam?
Okay, board, this is, uh, something that, uh, board policy requires me to notify you about when I authorize research. Uh, you have a a back, a back front thing, I think, in your folder. I won't call the individual's name, but we have a a teacher in our region who is working on her doctoral degree at Liberty University. Uh, she has, uh, permission to, uh, ask our fourth through eighth grade teachers to participate. That participation is completely voluntary on their part. They can participate or not. Essentially, what they would do if they agreed to participate is they will complete a survey and, um, identify themselves to her. She will give us that information and we will give, uh, we will wipe the information clean of any identifiable factors. Person's name, um, um, employee numbers, we'll wipe it clean. That's part of a standard research project, uh, like this. And then we will provide to the researcher, uh, the the survey results that they have taken and that person's last EVOs score. But the researcher will only see, uh, HC, Haywood County, number one oh one. I don't know if it's male or female or fourth grade or eighth grade. Their person's, uh, survey answers and their person's, uh, EVOs score plus two point five. So, uh, I have approved that. That's pretty neat and clean and safe and it probably lead to some good information. Any questions about that?
That's just for our information.
Yep, just for information. Yes, sir.
Okay.
We want people approving those things, don't we, Dr. Putnam?
Absolutely.
Yes, we do. Uh, and then I asked Jason, this may be a little redundant, but I know that we may have additional questions as we move into, uh, the possibility of in-person instruction uh, in the near future. So I've asked Jason to once again go over the the, uh, leave availability, uh, that is currently there for our
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Uh, Dr. Nolte asked me to go over, uh, the leave options again, uh, particularly how it would affect whether face-to-face instruction. How you want me, okay. This is making sure it's how you wanted me to go. Um, you know, a- as we have said several times now, the state emergency sick leave ended back in June, uh, which leaves employees with their own accumulated sick leave, which they have always had or will continue to have. Um, annual leave, which they accrue, and some people accrue personal leave, but not all. Uh, so those are three options that they accrue just naturally by being state employees. As you know, back in the spring, uh, after the pandemic started, the federal government, uh, passed two bills that provided for, uh, federal leave, uh, related to COVID nineteen. Uh, this just, uh, authorized the employers to provide this leave and directed us to provide the leave. It does not provide extra money. Uh, the leave is paid for from the normal funds that the employee is paid from, whether it's local, state, or federal money. So there's no extra money, but it is leave that is authorized and directed to be used. Uh, the first is, uh, what we call EPSLA, which is the Expanded, uh, Personal Sick Leave Act. Um, or Pandemic Sick Leave Act, sorry. Uh, and this provides two weeks or ten days, uh, eighty hours of leave for an employee for a couple of very specific reasons. One is they are sick and have symptoms and, uh, have tested positive for COVID and they are recovering from that. Uh, they can use the ten days for that. They can also use it while they are waiting on a test, whether they're presenting symptoms or not. Uh, so if they go get tested and it takes five days, then they can use it. And we have used quite a bit of, uh, this EPSLA, as we call it, for that purpose. Uh, or they can use it, uh, while caring for a family member who is either positive and sick or is waiting on a test and is presenting symptoms. Uh, so those are the three things that they can use it for. Uh, they can also use it for childcare uh, up to the ten days, uh, if a child is sick or is presenting symptoms and that sort of thing. Uh, the other one is is called Expanded FMLA. And now, normal FMLA is twelve weeks of leave for generally a medical reason or for childcare uh, after a birth. Uh, parental leave falls under FMLA. This is Expanded FMLA provided by the federal government, which provides another ten weeks on top of EPSLA for the sole purpose of childcare. Uh, it had, it it cannot be used, um, if you're waiting on a test, it cannot be used if you're sick and presenting symptoms. It is solely for childcare. And that is paid at two-thirds pay uh, for the childcare reason. It's full pay if you're sick, uh, using EPSLA. But for the Expanded FMLA, that's two-thirds pay, but they can use their accumulated sick leave to make up the other third as long as they haven't exhausted, uh, their own sick leave. So it could be full pay if they choose that option. Now, uh, that's essentially what is available now. Uh, there is one other option that we have been using because it has been a, uh, remote, uh, learning environment is we have been able to use the, uh, remote work agreement with employees who either uh, have been exposed and need to quarantine for fourteen days, they're waiting on a test, uh, to see if they're positive. Or if they're presenting symptoms, but they feel like they can still work. Uh, we have done a lot of remote work agreements with employees and they go home and work from home and continue to teach online uh, uh, because the students are remote. If we go back face-to-face, uh, this would not be an option anymore. Uh, the students would be in the building. You wouldn't have the option of teaching them, uh, remotely. So Dr. Nolte alluded to it earlier a little bit, um, by taking that option away, and that is an option that we have currently been using eight to ten times a week, uh, in the district in one way or another with teachers or other staff members. Um, it is the the option that is left is to use the EPSLA leave. And once they use it one time, once they've used the ten days, then the ten days are gone and they can't use it again. So if you are forced to quarantine more than once, uh, by no fault of your own, then the first time it's the federal leave, the next time it's your own accumulated sick leave, or if you don't have sick leave, then it's leave without pay. And as we were saying, for a a fairly new teacher without leave, uh, this could be half a month's pay. And if you think about that, um, this is is the thing that worries me from the HR perspective. Um, you know, I'm not in the instructional side and don't want to get in on that side, but from the HR side, we have been using this quite regularly and if that option is is taken away, uh, again, what you will have to resort to is the ten days of EPSLA. Now, uh, the way we've been doing it with the remote work agreement is the employee fills out the agreement. They have a schedule they have to keep. They have a log they have to complete for the principal and they go home and they teach. If we go to the EPSLA for this purpose, then they go home on federal leave and they don't, they don't do anything. They go home and wait. Uh, they're on leave, so you can't ask them to teach. They're on leave, so you can't ask them to teach. You can't ask them to plan. You can't ask them to coordinate with a sub. You, they're, I mean, they'll have plans that they have saved on the Google. Jill could talk to you more about that. And we would ask them to do those ahead of time just in case. But what I'm getting at is you don't have that teacher teaching anymore now they're at home on leave. And that can happen multiple times through no fault of their own. Most of the quarantines that we have seen have come from an exposure where a spouse has been exposed at work or at some event and they come home and now the teacher is having to quarantine as well. And that, that's something that we can do as much as we want to at school to try to keep everybody apart and safe and all that. But it, those outside influences that the teacher can't control and we can't control. And I blame it on spouses. Please don't have spouses call me tomorrow. You know, there's just all sorts of ways that that can happen. And, and so that's the thing that, that's worrying me a little bit and I think everyone else. I don't want to speak for them, but I think them as well. Most of the other factors we can control. It's, and, and, you know, God forbid, no one gets sick. We've had a few and thankfully they have recovered well. But it's the quarantines that are going to be the problem because they can happen in an instant. I mean, I had four today. All right, and just after lunch, from lunch till the, till the time I left to come down here. So that's something that, that comes and goes a little bit, but it's not something you can predict. It's not something you can really plan for. But those, those quarantines can cause a serious problem. And they're necessary, but they can cause a serious problem. Like we said, the, you know, the subs we have are great subs. Before the pandemic, we were operating with about 175 subs on the list. We had about 60 that worked regularly whenever we called. You also have to take into account at any given time how many subs might be quarantined for one reason or another. Might decide that the risk is too high due to cases going up or down. You know, that's not a group that we can force to work. We, we, you know, they serve us at their own pleasure. So with 75, I'm a little nervous about that. On any given week with teachers who might just be sick with a common cold or have a doctor's appointment or have a child doing something, you know, any given Thursday, Friday, we can use 60 subs easily and have before very regularly. And so with quarantines taking them out of the picture 14 days at a time, I'm not sure 75 would do it, particularly if they're limiting themselves to one school or another. So that's something else just to keep in mind. I'm not trying to be the doom and gloom guy, but I'm, I'm just pointing out what could happen and, and you can take that into consideration when you make your decisions. But that's the things we've run into lately with employees. You know, their other option that I didn't mention was is if they simply can't come and work under those conditions, they do have the option with your approval to take a year's leave without pay. We've had a couple of those so far and, and there will be a couple more on there for this Monday night. So that's another option that they have, but yeah, most of them, of course, don't want to do that, but it is an option.
Is there, is, is there any kind of change in protocol for teachers? Because I know we discussed one time before that if a teacher starts showing symptoms like, you know, runny nose or anything, that we'll have to quarantine or put them somewhere before they can get tested. So has that protocol that we talked about before changed any? Or is that still sort of the way we're going to address those issues? And so with that being said, your, what your scenario that you're talking about could happen quite frequently with the teacher coming in with a common cold or feeling bad one day or something like that and they have to go home and quarantine for so many days for, or be tested.
We've had a little bit of an update and Dr. Putnam can tell you about that. We communicated some of that today.
How available, if somebody has to be tested, how available is rapid testing now?
What's that?
If, if somebody had, if we have an employee, you know, we're coming up on allergy season and as soon as the spring hits and those symptoms are very similar. So if somebody has to be tested, how available, how available is rapid testing on there?
We're not seeing a, a good, good amount of rapid testing. I'm sure it exists, but most of what, and Jason can correct me because he deals with that more often than I, but two to 10 days. Is, yeah, we typically see.
Yeah, it's, right now it's around an average of four to five days. We've had one rapid test given to one of our employees and it was, you know, that day. But we've only seen the one. Most of it's taken four to five days to get one back.
And so that becomes a, a real personal decision as to, you know, we can't say, hey, you go get a rapid test. We can say you do have to be tested before you can return to work. But the screening is the same. Talked with our lead school nurse today and the magic number is 100.4. It doesn't matter what precipitated that temperature. It's a, if it's 100.4, they're going home. And so you're right, we will ease into flu season, regular flu season and allergy season and other things that will create an elevated temperature. But for those temperatures under 100.4, we'll monitor and can ask them to continue to monitor, self-monitor. But once it reaches that number, that is the magic number, 100.4 for the infrared touchless thermometers that we use. And so they would be asked to go home.
There's also part of an attestation that all of us have done every day now for quite some time where your temperature is taken when you enter the building and you answer three questions. So if any of those questions are yes, then you also go home. So there's that four-pronged approach. Dr. Putnam has fine-tuned or polished an attestation that we'll use with students that we took from state policy manuals. But essentially it's those four things for you need to go home. Yes, I've been, you all, you may have to answer, help me answer the questions even though I answer them every morning. Yes, I, I've tested positive. Yes, I've been in close contact. What's the other one?
Yes, is about symptoms.
Yes, I have the, the symptoms and there's a list of symptoms with the questions. And then the fourth thing is the temperature check of, of 100.4. So that applies to staff, students, everyone.
Is that question about close contact, is that, is that a question that's quantified by, have you been notified that you're a close contact? Or have you been a close contact? Because there's a big difference.
Yeah, the, the definition, and Dr. Putnam has said this to us a thousand times, because we do think if people will wear their mask and keep the right distance, they will not be a close contact. And, and he got this from Dr. Jaden and some other folks. You want to tell them the definition?
Yeah, so it's within six feet unprotected for greater than 15 minutes. And it can be any one of those three that exist, but those are the three things that will make you a close contact. And we, we inform staff, we could have a positive go, come to school, go through every class, and if everybody's maintained the six feet, wore a mask, obviously the 15 minutes is gone. They're going to be there around them longer than 15 minutes. So that's still okay, provided that they haven't been within six feet and they were wearing, wearing a mask. And if they'll do that, then you do not become a close contact.
If you start showing symptoms.
Right, right. And then that, you know, if you're the person showing symptoms, then you're the primary. So you'd get, you'd have to be sent home and tested if you were showing any of the symptoms.
That's, I don't, I don't want to oversimplify this because there are lots of, you know, there, there are lots of potential things that could happen here that are outside of our control. But one of the positives is if you're doing what you're supposed to be doing, you're just not going to be a close contact. We've said that in our office a lot. If Dr. Putnam or I, either one, were to become positive, the other person would not be a close contact. You know, because we're either outside six feet with a mask on or without a mask on, or if we're inside six feet, we're not there for 15 minutes without a mask. So there's a lot that I think we can control on campus. The, the unknowns are what's happening off of campus and who do they make close contact with off of campus? And what does that do to our ability to staff? So that, that's the, that's the real big unknown. And it's, it's, you know, probably very doable, but I'd be lying to you if I wasn't saying that's the one thing I worry about, the one thing we can't control.
Point on that, that I need to ask a question too about. Okay, say we get our in-person learning again. I don't care if it's high school, wherever. All right, you've got these kids, they're all gathered in our classroom and Johnny don't want to wear his mask. Johnny, why don't you put your mask on? Finally, the teacher is going to sit there. I mean, disciplinary actions, it should be the same as other, other disciplinary actions as far as I'm concerned. All right, get out of class. You can't, if you can't go by the rules or that you and, you and little Suzie are sitting there, you're too close together. The teachers are going to be monitoring and disciplining them like they would normally do in a, to keep classroom continuity in, in the classroom. So I'm wanting to make sure that we back our teachers if they do have to get onto someone for not wearing their mask. I'm trying to think, how are we going to be able to do that or sit there and, oh, get you? The child just does not want to obey you, then, okay, maybe you don't need to be in this school. But then you send them home, then their parents want to call. Dr. Nolte, y'all, just sent my child home. Well, we tried to get your child to do what's supposed to be done to help protect everybody. That's why we're back in school. So how do we, you know, we've got to be able to back our teachers on that decision. I feel like, I mean, I don't know. It may not happen, it may happen. I just want to make sure that we are, we inform our teachers, yeah, we, we got you back.
They have the General Assembly and Governor Cooper's backing on that.
Well, they do, yeah, but I just wanted to make sure we do.
As well as.
We're able to enforce that as any other actions, yeah.
Well, yeah, I, I think what I would say is, I'll be the first person to tell you, I don't like a mask.
I don't either.
It's encumbering. I would be better off if I didn't have to wear one. But you know, right now, especially in a public school setting, I, I need to wear one. So I hope there comes a time really soon where that is not necessary. And I hope that there comes a time when we can have Plan A, which is everyone can come and the social distancing is there, but it's not as strict as written into that plan. But I think right now, to assure that we can have some form of in-person, we will have to enforce that and we'll, we'll do that as kindly and gently as possible. But we just hope that people will understand if we're going to have school, at least right now, we'll, we'll have to use the mask. And I don't particularly like that on a personal level, but I understand that it's necessary. It's not comfortable. I'm just telling you, but I think we have to do that right now.
Speaking of masks, are we providing kids with so many masks? And they get them like when they first show up? How are we going to distribute those?
And the state actually provided five washable masks. They were made, they're Hanes brand, so they were made right here in North Carolina. So I was glad to see that as well, help promote North Carolina business. But it's five washable masks, they're white in color, and every student will get a pack of five. All of our staff got a pack of five as well. Hanes brand, white, washable mask. It gives kids and staff a, a mask for every day of the week. I didn't go to the trouble putting letters on mine. I'd forget what the T and the TH was for probably. So I just stick with a plain old black one and, and wash as needed, so.
All right. Any other questions related to leave or mask or anything else? I would just encourage you, this is a lot. It's a lot if you're sitting here. It's a lot for us and we have studied it. I'm sure it's a lot if you're watching or listening to the live stream. But Board members in particular, we'll have, you all will have a decision to make on Monday and we'll bring you a recommendation. But we want you to know that it will not be neat and clean and there could be serious repercussions where we have to shut things down if we go in person. And we just wanted all of that to be, you know, we wanted all of that to be out in the open and, and available for everyone to know about. If there are no other questions about in-person instruction, we have some announcements. And Dr. Putnam, I know one of his is turf. We have just some general announcements about things that you already know about or have already acted on.
So Monday is going to be a busy day. September 14th, Monday, our bid documents for our new renovation at the new central office. Those bid documents go out, that'll be advertised in the Asheville Citizen and the Waynesville Mountaineer. So any, any and all folks listening or interested, that's where you can find that advertisement. Also, September 14th will be our turf replacement kickoff. They will begin mobilizing contractors into the area at C Weatherby and Pisgah Memorial and begin turf replacement at those two locations. And then also on September 14th, we'll begin the softball light installation for Pisgah Softball Field. So September 14th is going to be a busy day. In the midst of some really rotten times, it's great to see progress and projects getting underway. So I just thought y'all would like a little bit of good news.
And just for the record, the turf replacement is, I mean, because we were planning on doing it at the end of the year. So we're several months ahead of schedule, is that correct?
We are. We actually timed that just about right. We eliminated the possibility of tearing the turf up in the spring and then our kids possibly coming back and not having a field to play on. And we timed, kicked it off, the, the construction in time that any sport that would utilize these fields will not be impacted. The, the completion date is December 23. And so that being said, soccer is scheduled for, I'm sorry, can't remember, January 4, January 9, I think, is the first team that would actually use turf. And they, they will not, will be hit, done ahead of that. So no sports teams will be impacted by the completion date of December 23.
Very good.
Other announcements? We're finished with the open session part, Mr. Franch.
Okay. Take this down for a minute. This time I need, I guess we'll call the meeting to order and then I'll need a motion to go into closed session.
Make a motion, we go into closed session.
Ms. Barrett's made a motion to go into closed session to discuss, I think it's legal issues, is that correct? Mr. Smathers?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I have a second. Mr. Rogers has seconded the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's take about a five-minute recess before we convene the cold, closed session. Let's take about a five-minute recess before we convene the cold, closed session.